Good morning and welcome to the August 12, 2020 meeting of the Acton School Committee. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We ought to repeat that every day for a while.
Before we move on with our agenda this morning, I'd like to ask that we take the moment of silence for the passing of Jill Luternow very unexpectedly. A couple of days ago, Jill has been, he's been a great guy in town. He's been our road commissioner. He stepped up to the plate when we really needed him. He's been very cooperative in working with us here at the school on the, anything that we needed from the town department. And our, our love and sympathies and prayers certainly go out to Mary and to all of Jill's family. So can we just have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. All right, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Minor, only that 6.5 and 6.6 are, they combined. Pre-K changes are part of the hybrid learning presentation today. So there really, it's really one.
So 6.6 would be like that?
When we get to it, we'll call, if I could ask the chair to call 6.5 and 6.6 as one item when we get to it.
Okay. All right, do we have any comments from the public? Then let's go on to number three, which is a consent agenda, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to the consent agenda, except that on 3.1, we just have to change it that we did have a session, but nothing to report.
I'll second that.
Okay, and you can second it, that we accept the consent agenda with the amendment to 3.1, that there was an executive session, but there was no action taken after the meeting. Jeanette seconded that. Any discussion? All in favor? So move. Okay, do you have any questions or comments on any of the administrative reports from this time?
I had a question for Mike. How did all the computers come back? Good?
Yeah, I believe we received 99 to 100% in returns with maybe a 1 to 2% damage.
Is there any delay on, like, is there any that you have to turn in and get some new ones back?
Yes, we're waiting, the entire world is actually waiting on their refresh fleet of devices to ship, Judith, Philbit, and factory manufacturing halts. We ordered enough devices to refresh the pre-K, which didn't have devices originally, but in the event of remote learning this year, we ordered some for pre-K, third through sixth grade. Yes. And with that, those devices aren't old and we are waiting, so if I have to, I'm holding on to the old devices in the event that we have to deploy those. But hopefully we'll receive the devices. We were told the end of July, now we're looking at the end of August.
Yeah.
Hopefully it's beginning to set down on May as we do receive the devices and then we can roll them off. If not, we have to go under the backup.
Oh, that's good.
We did our return during the reverse parade and got most from back then. Mike's done a great job at inventory and cleaning and getting these ready to go again if we need them. And it was just a handful of people who didn't return them for whatever reason. They needed a little nudge and we got everything back within, you know, within the month.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's really good.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the reports, administrative reports? Okay, then we'll move on to the superintendents.
Sure, I just have a couple of things. Most of my talking today is going to be around opening school, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things out of the gate. I just wanted to thank everybody, you understand, the school committee understands, the public understands that closing school is one thing, reopening school is a whole nother ball of wax. Closing school was a, was a school board and superintendent's decision, and then the staff needed to prepare for remote learning. But opening school is very complex, very dynamic. There's, every time you look at an issue, five or six other issues kind of fly off that and right down to the granular level as to what parents need to pack for kids each day. And we're still working on some of the, the real detailed issues. But I want to thank all the, all the staff that's on the collaborative planning team and the administrators in this room for really stepping it up this summer. I did say in June to the staff, you know, usually Mr. Ross leaves you alone, it's your summer, unless if it's an emergency, you're not going to hear from me. But I did ask the teachers and ed techs to check their email once a week in June before we left. I said, it's a different summer, it's, it's a responsibility to just, you know, check and stay in touch because I will be reaching out and I made an attempt to try to get an update out to staff and you, once a week, if not once every 10 days, depending on what has emerged. Saying that without the collaborative planning team and the ed techs and teachers and the administrators that are on that collaborative planning team, I couldn't reach out to people. It was, they really drove the process. There's a million things to do and out of those, 900,000 of those need to be by committee, the other 100,000 I can just kind of make a decision. And it's, it's an interesting process, but my, my deepest thanks goes out to everybody who showed up this summer online to help open our school. And I'm going to explain how that's going to happen in a bit. The other one is, I think everybody should understand the timeline. I know we're not live with this video, but for the school committee to understand that the timeline with positive votes this morning, that I would very much like to send out a blackboard tonight, if not tomorrow, explaining to the community and the parents what has been decided. We have surveys, parents have some information, I've said things publicly in CPT meetings and ed team meetings and, you know, word gets out as to where the wind's blowing, but nothing's official until after this morning. Once it's official, then I can reach out immediately to the community to say, this is what Acton's doing, and we're right there with other schools on our timeline, so that, that's good. The other thing is, we might be a little bit ahead of other schools that if by next week, perhaps by the end of next week, we can give parents that welcome back letter from the school that talks about busing and bringing and this and that, and everything combined with what you need to know for your child to open school. And then with a little note that says, and more information forthcoming, because there's all those things that haven't been decided yet. But I do think we're going to be able to do two big pieces of communication, one tonight or tomorrow, and then another one to individual families about particular student schedules and what their life means. So that's coming right up. So if it seems like, and I don't think, I haven't got the message that there's been a void of communication, it's just that timing is everything. And I can't make an official comment until after today as to where we're going. But we've been planning almost every day since June to get to this point. So I just wanted to kind of give you the sense of what it took to get to today for you to vote on our schedule. That's all I have to say for updates.
I would just like to say that I've been communicating with John many times over the summer, and he's always either been in a Zoom meeting with his administration or with his planning committee, or with the superintendents of York County, or with the Commissioner of Education, and he, I, I think he has zoomed his way through the summer for sure. And I just want to express, on behalf of all of us, really for the board, our thanks for all the work that you put in this summer and to get us to where we are today and to let you know how much we appreciate all you and all your committees have done this summer.
And I do appreciate that, but I also look around the room and it doesn't happen without, without them. And I do want to comment that a small school system, we can be a lean workforce, we can be efficient, we can respond, and we can be effective in a way that no big school system can. So I think that is a blessing for us.
Exactly.
It really is. We know our parents, we know our kids, and although not everybody's going to be happy with every decision, it's not so big that you're frozen, that you're paralyzed. So that's, that's actually, it's really nice to be an Acton at a time like this, it really is.
All right, any, any, let's see, you can move on now, I guess, to number five. Do we have anything from the long range planning committee?
Did not meet.
Okay, other policy committee?
Did not meet.
Okay, so let's move on to new business, our school committee positions, oh, that's this time of year.
Right, and I nominate Judith Shane as the chairman of the Acton School Committee.
Jen's going to take this from the tape, so we want to go slowly. And she's got to be able to hear you. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Did you hear me?
We can hear you. I think we got Judy as the nomination of the chair, if I heard that right.
And I seconded it.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
Any other nominations?
Nope.
All in favor?
Congratulations, you're ready.
Yes.
Are we not having a vice chair?
Oh, just, you got missed, so yeah, you think you need one, sorry.
I nominate Jeanette Pierce for vice chair.
I second her.
Jeanette Pierce has been nominated as vice chair for the coming year. Any other nominations? All in favor?
I could just make a comment to the public and to Jen who's listening, there was an addendum, adjustment to the agenda that 6.1.2 is now the nomination of the vice chair as heard. Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to our committees. We have our policy committee.
Do we nominate people or are we just?
Well, what we've done is just kind of stayed the same, but do you have to nominate? Do we have to?
No.
Oh, stay the same if you want.
We just, if everybody is happy with the committees that they've been serving on, then, yeah, I can just, you can just assume that everybody's going to continue on those committees. And we can just make note of who they are.
Yeah.
When they're in that, our policy committee.
Right.
And Mary and Amanda are on the long range planning committee.
Just ask a question of order to Mary. The collective bargaining committee, we'll develop that when we have to discuss the 120-day notice that collective bargaining, we don't do that now, correct? We do that when we need, we need to appoint a collective bargaining committee when we collectively bargain, but we don't need to do that every year, correct?
Right.
Correct, so the 120-day notice will then look for two people to be on, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
What we should have on here, however, is 6.14 should be the finance committee, which we've usually had on there, which is Jeanette and I have been on that with Mary as an alternate. Assigning things. So we'll add that as a 6.14 finance committee.
Yep.
Judy and Jeanette with Mary as an alternate. Okay, let's move on to 6.2, and we have the nomination of two new teachers.
We do, pleased to announce that our final two of five new positions this summer, that we've landed on two candidates that I present to you today. With social studies, we reopened that position, we interviewed and didn't find a candidate that particularly matched our needs, and then reopened it, so we did that one twice, and we have a candidate today. But let's start with music. We have Annie Johnson, it's A-N-N-E Johnson, Anne, but she goes by Annie. Annie has some experience teaching, she's the, was the marching band director for Scarborough High School, as well as worked for a Catholic school in Portland as their music teacher. She's originally from the Midwest, and she moved to Maine to check out Maine and loved Maine and, and moved to Portland. And I talked to her about that drive from Portland to Acton, and she said she'd like to try it. I said, okay, I do pretty much the same thing, not Portland, but it's an hour. And she's been in the building a lot this summer, and she's very pleased to be here. And so I present Annie Anne Johnson as our music teacher. And then also for social studies, we have James Williams, he goes by Trey. We interviewed Trey not too long ago, actually, the end of July. Trey's originally from the Kennebunk area and is a Farmington graduate. He strikes me as a bit non-traditional, I think he had some full-time employment in between, he's had some leadership positions in, in the private sector. And Trey, Trey joins us very enthusiastically coming out of Farmington with, with some long-term subbing under his belt and filling in, in the Kennebunk Middle School prior to coming to us. So he was looking for a full-time thing, and I think we got really fortunate to meet James Trey Williams to be nominated for social studies. I will have, I'll have these two and the other three meet us in September to come in in person. They'll meet you when we open school, give them a chance to come in and say hi, but I'll make sure that the September meeting, I have all the new employees here for you to talk with.
And can you just give us the salary?
Yes, I can. For Annie Johnson, BA Step 2, $41,001.41, that's BA Step 2, $41,141. And for Trey Williams, BA Step 1, that's $39,841, BA Step 1, $39,841.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to accept the nomination of Annie Johnson as a music teacher and Trey Williams as a social studies teacher for the coming year. Do a salary at $41,141 for Annie Johnson and $37,841 for?
$39.
$39.
For, right.
So moved.
Seconded.
They moved by Mary, seconded by Amanda. Any further discussion?
Linda, Linda seconded it.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm foggy.
I know.
Can't see the mountains moving.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? So move, welcome to our new staff members. Okay, let's move on to 6.3, which is an update on summer school.
You bet. This is, this was just going to be more of a conversation, the administrators don't know it, but they were all here for summer school, and I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about our summer school. You're going to see in a video that we put together is kind of how summer school has played out. You know, we had, I'm going to say, I can rough it out, I'm sure one of the administrators can tell you exactly, roughly 20, 20 students and roughly 10 employees were in the building. Lori actually was one of the teachers, Lori can probably tell you a bit about her experiences teaching the middle school. And we had kids here for the month of July, from Monday through Thursday, from 8:30 to 11:30. We specialized transportation, some of them that required that. We bussed most of them and very few got dropped off by their parents. And we had a process for all of those. But I would, I'd like to just kind of really turn it over, and maybe I'll just start with Kim as just a quick reflection of some of the things you had to do, even just about transportation. And we'll just touch base with whoever wants to speak, and then you can Q and A us about summer school, because you're going to see some of this. But I think it's really super important for us, before I turn it over to Kim, to know that we did summer school like this, with the masks, the PB. We did it because kids needed it, a gap in learning with remote learning. We did it with kids in grades three through eight, which was brand new, we've never done the higher middle school, excuse me, the older elementary kids before ever, but we decided to do that this year because we felt there was a gap in some learning for some kids because of remote learning. That was new. And then we did our regular ESY as we always do, and our standards recovery for middle school as we always do. So we did it because we needed to, but also to do boot camp for opening. So we had a real live experience doing this, so some of us have a feeling for how this can actually work when we reopen.
So the transportation, we had it pretty well set up where if they were on a bus, they have assigned seats, and they were all spaced, every other seat, the ones that were picked up first were way in the back, all the way to the last one picked up was in the front. And so before they got on the bus, they had their temperature taken, they made sure they had a mask on, they put hand sanitizer on, as long as their temperature was fine, they were able to get on the bus. When, when they get off the bus, they stayed, you know, six feet apart, so they became, you know, instead of like all at once, they were very good about coming off the bus. When they got back on the bus in the afternoon, we lined them up the way that they would get on the bus, so they could get on the bus rather quickly and go home. And again, back in their assigned seats with their masks on. When they were dropped off by car, they, we had Sue Audi at the curb, she would take their temperature, make sure they had a mask on, ask them a series of questions, you know, that we asked everybody. And then if they, they were fine, they could get in, and they, they would go into the school with the parents, stay in the car. And that's, I mean, transportation went really smooth because we, we put a lot of planning into transportation, and that went really well. When they came in the building, we had, like, Andy put up all the hand sanitizers up by the doorways, and they were able to, you know, they, they did their hand sanitizer when they came in as well, and then they went to, they, they went right to the classroom. So transportation, and you'll see that in the video, I think went really, really well. And then when they get in the classroom, I'm going to let Lori take over there because, and Sharon, Sharon did the, the special ed kids, and they had a different routine. And then, but Lori's classroom, they had specific routines on what they were inside and outside.
Well, I had eight kids when they were all there. They came in with their masks on, but we had enough room to spread them all out, so when they were sitting at their desk working, they were able to take their masks off. I kept mine on as I walked around to help them. You know, they were really good about following the expectations. I listed every day what each one of them had to do, so they knew coming in to just check the board. When we went outside, they were good about putting their mask on, going out, taking a paper bag with them, storing it in a paper bag when they got outside. Sometimes we went outside and continued working, sometimes they went outside to take a snack break. But anytime they got up and moved, they automatically put their mask on, went to the bathroom, got a snack, whatever it was. But when they were in their seats, because we had enough space, you know, we had the fans going, there was enough circulation in the room, kids were very cooperative, so.
And that's all ditto for me, with the exception of, we had three spaces that we used for about nine kids, and those nine kids didn't come every day, we had some that came on just Mondays and Tuesdays, we had one that only came on Wednesdays. So on Wednesdays, we had all nine kids, but, you know, the other days we would have like eight. So we had staff working with kids in three different smaller spaces. And they each, I bought them each little plastic bins, so they put all of their work in there. When they were done, they put the covers on so that when the cleaning took place, you know, their stuff was inside the bin. And Andy and his crew would come in and clean, as they did everywhere else, because right after we left, they came in and they cleaned everything. So it was very smooth, it was really nice to see how well organized it was, so.
Andy, any comments from your end of the world, having kids in here under a new kind of COVID umbrella versus regular summer school?
No, I think that the planning that went into prepping for the summer school program was good, and I think that once we got in here, it was, it was a little bit of a learning curve the first couple of days.
Yeah.
But, you know, after the first couple of days, once the kids settled into the routine, I think it went really well. The other thing that we provided for the kids were some picnic tables outside, which set up an outdoor learning space, which the teachers were able to utilize, and I think the kids liked it, you know, liked being outside on a nice day, so. And as John will explain at some point today, that's something that we're looking at too for once we resume, there's some outdoor learning opportunities for the kids. So overall, I mean, from our end, it was great, the staff, you know, communicated their needs as far as cleaning goes. Yeah, it went really well from our end.
The framework for opening summer school put out by the MDOE with CDC guidelines is a bit different than the framework for opening school in September for all schools. There's some nuances there and there's some differences, so, for example, you know, in the classroom during the summer school with six-foot plexiglass, we could allow students in certain occasions to not wear their masks. That's going to be much tighter when we open school because the new framework for openings doesn't allow for some of that. So Mike and I, after Lori and Kim did an excellent job at filming kids and taking photos over the summer, so we had some great raw footage. And then you'll see in the video, we had to put that back together, but Mike and I went back and forth at least a half dozen times to ensure that any shot we have is in compliance with the new framework. So we're working from one set of rules for the summer, and we really kind of have the same set of rules, but a little bit tighter, is how we're going to open school. But this, I think, overall was an excellent experience. I had a chance, because I wasn't in a classroom, I had a chance to go to every classroom any day I was here, check and see how things were going, and I didn't see one time where a teacher or a kid was non-compliant. And that's one of the issues, is what if my kid takes off? And what if we, kids will be kids, I get that. We really didn't have any issues. We had a couple of small discipline issues with some younger kids that don't know each other, and, but it wasn't the kind of issue that would, you know, come right to the foreground, that this was so unsafe that you needed to leave the building. Any questions or comments on summer school, from you to any staff?
That's one, one thing though to keep in mind, a lot of this planning is that planning is constantly changing as the guidelines come down from the state. So even once school is in session, we anticipate still meeting quite frequently, you know, as the guidelines and our requirements change, so. Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, but like John mentioned earlier, it's like we've got a great team and a lot of good input from the staff and the administrative team, so I'm confident that we'll be in a positive direction.
Okay. And thank you to all the summer school staff, and it's, it is a good practice session, and it's good to know that the things that we wonder about actually can work well, so. That's good. Thank you. All right, we'll go on now to sixth school, which is a possible change in the start date of school.
Correct. This will require, I'll explain my recommendation, this will require a vote. Right now, the school-approved calendar that was developed in February before COVID-19 hit, hit the, hit the map, had us coming back to school on August 31. That was generally true of most schools in Southern Maine, and Arista County has their own schedule, but because Labor Day was so late, most schools were coming back in late August, because I think Labor Day is about as late as you can get, it's the last Monday, right? I think it's the 7th. So the, so the reality is, what I'm looking to do is move us out basically a week, and I'll tell you why. We got together in the spring to develop a plan to reopen in the spring. We got together for five days in June, and it was rare that schools did that. Again, small school can do it. We had less than 50 people gather, we could do that. We developed planning for if we had to go into remote learning in August, late August, August 31st, was we're not gathering, how are we going to do remote learning, how are we going to do it better? So that's how we spent our days. We didn't even know as professionals the word hybrid learning. We didn't know what green, yellow, red is. This is June, none of this was developed. So over the course of the summer, the CDC, Maine Department of Education, and the governor's office have put things in place for reopening school in the fall. We didn't, they're still emerging, as Andy says, but at least a framework is there, we can work with that to reopen. We couldn't spend five days in June to reopen in hybrid, because we didn't even know what that was, it wasn't invented yet. So in working with the administrators, the teachers' organizations, individual staff members, late last week, it started appearing to me that I should probably really consider moving us back a week to allow the teachers to come in and have some time. We've done a lot of work in cohorts and as a CPT in the Zoom world, but to actually do the work we need to do, we need to be able to do this. We need to be together, and we need real time being together to figure out how we're going to work through the system I'm going to show you next, which is a hybrid schedule. So my recommendation is that the school committee begin school for children on Tuesday, September 8th. And what I'm going to do is I am still going to have staff arrive, report back on the 26th, Wednesday, the 26th of August, and the 27th. Those are our two PD days that you've already approved on this, on the calendar. Those don't change. But I'm going to use that first week, which was a four-day school week for kids, which was Monday through Thursday. Those were days teachers and ed techs were going to be here anyway. All I'm asking is that kids don't come. So the teachers and ed techs come, it's a day they're supposed to be So the teachers and ed techs come, it's a day they're supposed to be here anyway. But we're going to use that as a robust professional development. So I'm actually going to get six days of PD to reopen. And I think that is necessary. I wouldn't ask for so much if I didn't think it was necessary. And, um, yeah, so that's how we're going to use our time. The only, the only thing you're voting on is having the first school day for kids to be Tuesday, September 8th. And of course, that'll be a four-day week for our first week of school.
Okay. So all the promotion to amend the school calendar to start school for kids on September 8th.
Some move.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette. Any discussion?
Does it move the end date?
The, the, so the end date for kids would still be the end date that we have. We have a waiver going into this year from the, from the Department of Education that the minimum number of days a student shall be in school has been waived, the 175. And we're what, well, teachers are 183. I don't want to, I don't want to say something that may not, I don't know exactly how many student days there are. We know what our teachers' days are because they're contractual. But we also know moving into this year that we don't have to meet the minimum requirement. So good question. Staff are going to do their days. Kids are going to actually get four days less schooling so that the teachers can prepare. And this also syncs with Sanford High School. Not that we were going to do it just for that reason, but at least it does sync with our high school. They're starting on the 8th as well.
My question was going to be about the number of student days.
Right.
Whether it was waived or not.
And it is, it is going into this year. That's just a continuation of what happened last spring. Jeanette?
Well, I was just going to, I mean, this, this isn't in here, but has our enrollment changed?
Our enrollment actually went up.
That's what I mean.
Now, I'm also going to tell you, some people have homeschooled their kids, so our enrollment went back down. I think I can give you an enrollment report in September, because here's what's happening. Is some people are saying, um, I just don't, I just want to homeschool my kid. I, 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 I don't want to do public education until this clears up. And we've had a few families homeschool who normally are not our regular homeschool families. Um, but our enrollment was going up, especially at the younger ages, as we were going through June, our pre-K and K numbers were getting rather large. Um, I think you may find that in Acton too, as the future goes, that we are clearly not a placed-based work society, that many of us can be wherever to work. Not everybody, but there's a sector of career in society that, that allows you not to be placed-based. At places like Acton, as we've heard from the Hobarts about a year ago, is going to become a place that people may decide to live because they don't need to be in an area where they don't want to be anymore. But we were seeing this really not as a result of COVID. I really don't think that was why our enrollment went up. I think our enrollment went up because there's more housing available and people are moving here. So we're getting bigger.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. So we have the motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, Mike, I'm gonna try to dial in. I'm gonna get up and move over there. So I'm gonna do most of this from a PowerPoint and some of it can certainly be interactive. Do you mind if I could sit right here? It might be easier for me. Thank you. Thank you, Sharon.
Everybody see the screen?
Okay. So this is really, this isn't a fancy PowerPoint. It's more just about information to walk you through. And please do ask questions at any time. And whoever in the room that's best positioned to answer the question will. Because this isn't new to any of us. This was all shared prior as a, as a document prior to turning it in. I just basically took the document and put it in slides for you. I'm hoping that once we get through this today, I'll get it, get it to spice it up a little bit, have some pictures of kids in the school and we'll put it on our website. But this is information for you to make a, um, informed vote this morning in regards to a hybrid learning plan. So just a background, so you understand where we're coming from. Um, we closed on March 15th. I'll never forget that weekend due to an emerging COVID-19 pandemic. Um, the staff returned on the 16th and 17th to develop a remote learning plan and deploy learning materials to all students. Although I was hopeful to reopen in a few weeks, we remain closed, uh, to students for the remainder of the 2020 school year. Just a footnote there is, um, it went, it went as well as it could. We got a lot of good feedback. And up to that date where staff returned on June 5th, we had also had a reverse parade celebrating the school. And we also had a very good eighth grade graduation. We haven't even met since that eighth grade graduation. That was awesome and it's on our website. Staff returned on the 5th, uh, and participated in five days of PD to refine and enhance a remote learning plan should AES ever need to close again in the future. So if, if the zone goes to red and if your county in Maine sees a spike, we're positioned in a much better place to offer remote learning to all if, if forced to do that. In July of 2020, AES opened summer standard recovery and extended school year programming to students in need of academic remediation as well as ongoing school services. Students and staff quickly became accustomed to following the CDC safety guidelines associated with operating a summer program, as you just heard from the people that ran the program. So the hybrid learning model to reopen Acton elementary school is a blend of in-person and remote learning that includes these, these bullet safety scheduling, curriculum, transportation, nutrition, remote learning and pre-K. And I'll, I'll get into each one of these, starting with safety. So MDOE's six requirements include, and this is across the board, every school must have a symptoms screening at home before coming to school. Through Carol and our CPT, we have a document about home self-check. What parents must do with their children before driving them to school or putting them on the school bus. It's very clear what needs to happen. And then there's going to be a footnote or a second piece that if your child has any of these symptoms, here's how long they need to be out of school. And that second piece is emerging. We know what we're asking parents to do, very similar to, every one of us had to go online on a Google Doc and do a symptoms check before we came into the building when students were here during summer school, including our temperature check. And we would file that in through a Google Doc, which cleared us to come into the building. We're not asking parents to do that with us. We're asking them on the honor system, check your kids before you send them for these symptoms. This kind of, this is the kind of information you need as a parent to make a conscious decision to send your kid into school today. And if you don't, here's what you should be doing if these symptoms are, are prevalent. And that second piece is forthcoming. We're working on that with the state nurses and Carol has been awesome helping us with this. Uh, two, physical distancing and identified isolation room must be in place. So the physical distancing, the, the rules for kids are three feet, three feet between students, six feet when not wearing a mask, such as when we're in the classroom eating. You can't eat with a mask on. So it's a must that it be six feet with a mask off, three feet for children, children to children. Six feet for adults to children, unless if it's not a regular contact, I'm coming over to help Kim with her math. I'm there for a few minutes and I move on, no more than three feet, but less than six is okay. So it comes down to frequency, how often and how long. That's the big thing. Frequency and duration are the two big words right now. And we're going to be training and working with our staff. That's, thus, that's why we need the PD days. This is all brand new to them. You're learning about it before some of them are even learning about this. The isolation room is for this. If a child is out on the playground and falls off a swing and hurts his or her ankle, it's an acute medical issue. They're going to bring the student in and Carol's going to see that student probably right in her regular facility. It's an injury. But if a student is showing signs of symptoms of illness, and that could be any illness, that could be bad case of allergies, that could be influenza, it doesn't have to be COVID. But we're going to treat it as if these symptoms are similar to COVID. Then we're going to have an isolation room, which is going to be a place for students that are showing that they're sick, need to go there instead of into Carol's regular room. What we've decided for now is that room will be the other half of my office. It has its own door where that little conference table is where the planning teammates, um, long-range planning meets in there. The, that'll mostly be the same. We're going to move some of the stuff in the back out. And I noticed we now have a, a second bed, Andy, in the conference room that finally came in.
Correct.
We'll be moving that in. And Andy's going to partition where he opened up those two, remember it used to be two offices? Where Andy did great work and opened it. He's not going to close it permanently, but we're going to either have an accordion or pipe and drape or something for privacy and a barrier for me to whomever's in there sick because I'm right next door. If somebody's in there, I'm probably going to come work in the library. And when they leave, Andy will come in with his crew and sanitize my office and that room. But it seemed to make sense to offer that room because it has the least impact on anybody else in the building. I don't have to move anybody to offer up that room. So even if a kid has psychosomatic medical issues, like their stomach's upset and they vomited because they missed their mother, it, it's going to be one of those situations where we work with a student in that room versus Carol's room. And if a kid spikes an attempt and is not feeling well, we're going to work in that room, not Carol's room. And we're going to call the parent immediately and we're going to have two other people's names and numbers as backup because the rule is we want to move that student along as soon as possible. We want to care for that individual, but move them along as soon as possible. So that's why we have the isolation room. Um, face coverings, if you may, in front of you, you, I think you all have, you're wearing one. It looks like most of you are wearing the AES ones. Mary has her own. As I pass these out to you, this is the face covering that we have that we purchased. We had a total of $7,500 worth of pieces, one or the other.
Pieces.
Pieces. I think, if I get me right, do we have a hundred masks or 50 masks? Clear shields. Fifty shields? Fifty of the shields and Lori, Lori used one of those. She can give you feedback on that. The masks we all wear. And then the clear, I haven't tried those on yet. I don't know if anybody has tried on the clear ones yet.
We, we did.
Yeah.
Does this go on the bottom?
It goes on the bottom of the top.
Yeah. The only thing with those is they kind of, they, your breath kind of gets in there and it does heat up. So like during the summer, those are kind of hard to wear. But they're really good, you know, to see your mouth. That's why we got them. Like the speech therapist reading on the kids. So you can, you can actually see the mouth moving. I think in the fall and the winter, when it gets a lot cooler than it is now, that will probably won't be a problem. They'll be a lot more comfortable. But, um, we got a ton of those.
Okay. So a hundred of the clear masks, 50 of the shields and the rest, uh, which is close to 6,500-ish or more of these masks. Now, we got on this early and put it in order early because we're like, you know what? These things are going to go like hotcakes. And the shields that are here, I'll just, the, the protective face coverings is on there. But what's not on there are these plexiglass shields that Andy got for us, which are portable, which allow that distance. So if you have a five-foot table, kids are at either end and they have this, and they have this between them, we're good. We've got masks, we've got, we've got the shield, we've got the partitions. So we got, we, I believe we have everything we need to open school. And if we need more, we hopefully will be able to get more. Okay. So you're, you're wearing hers. There you go. What do you think? Can you speak through that?
I like it better than the mask.
Yeah, I mean, you'd probably get more air.
I did too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're saying that's just as safe.
It's a, it's a mask, face covering, that if there's a reason for that. The reason for that for staff could be, I can't get through my day. And if you give me one of those, I can. There's my reason. I'm not going to be looking for a doctor's note. Because this is going to be, this is a change. This is going to be a change. I noticed when I put on my glasses to read, they fog up. So I gotta work on some mechanism to keep these from fogging up when I'm wearing this mask. I'll figure that out. We're all going to figure out our own ways of making this work. Maybe I wear one of those when I'm reading.
It's not, it doesn't feel as steamy inside.
No, that one goes under the other one. It goes underneath your chin. So that's where it holds it all in. But.
It'd be kind of neat if those flipped up like a welder's mask, but they don't. I think the hinge was probably an extra cost. But, oh boy, wouldn't it make life a little easier than to take it off every time you wanted to flip it up? But that's what was approved. That's what we got. We got them early. Andy and Kim were right on this. And I might want to get these fans. I remember saying, get some fans. And I was like, I don't see any fans. We got fans yet? They're like, oh, we gotta get fans. I'm like, get fans today. Good thing we got fans. How many, we, how many of those big black fan, window box fans we get?
We bought forty of them.
We bought forty of them for air exchange. You know, try to get a fan now.
Are you doing those for in or out?
Those, those are to be put in classrooms and, and blow air out of the classroom.
Yep.
So what we did was we made sure that we had enough for each classroom. And then we also looked at like alternative learning spaces that might be utilized, um, in office areas as well. So we have more than enough fans for the whole, whole building.
Good.
So the state also says number four, we have to teach and practice hand hygiene. Won't get into the weeds with you, but there are very clear times when kids need to sanitize their hands. It's in the regs, it's in the guidelines. We know it. We need to learn it. Every, the kids need to learn it. And we're going to go through PBIS to show what the expectations are for masking hands. We're going to use PBIS as our way of getting to the kids. And we'll use PD to train the staff. Um, personal protective equipment beyond what you have here, a face covering is this personal protective equipment. But there's also some pieces in number five, under the requirements, where if you have a student who needs to be held or in any way a special needs student that needs contact, then it's the mask, the shield, and perhaps a gown. We do have gowns too. We just didn't bring one in. So know that for our most, um, sensitive students that may need personal contact, we have those pieces in place. For the few trained individuals that need to use that, most likely through Sharon's department. Um, and return to school after illness, this is, has to be in place and it's emerging. The return to school data and the return to school regs and processes are still emerging. Working with Carol, it sounds like it changes every time she goes onto a Zoom meeting. But at some point, as I said, Mr. Ross is going to have to freeze everything in time because I need to let people know, as of this date, this time, this was it. And then we need to come up with a mechanism for people to update and look live if things have changed because they will continue to change. So that's going to be, because number six, we're working on it. And it's not going to be hard to do as soon as we know exactly where this is going to settle. But it's still emerging. So that was, safety scheduling. Safety face coverings, return. Scheduling, okay. A hybrid schedule that we've decided upon is scheduling half the students to be present at AES on any given school day to respect the six-foot and the three-foot distances with the protective pieces like plexiglass that are portable. You, originally it was six feet. There was no three feet. Three feet's new. Three feet got a, came up July 31st. You can't get all kids in this building. You couldn't even do it with three feet. Andy and I walked the building twice in June and said, how are we going to do this? We measured classrooms and we measured chairs and we measured desks and we measured the size of a 14-year-old versus a four-year-old. They're different. You can't bring, and our, and our, and our enrollment was increasing at the time. Can't bring everybody to school back at the same time and respect this. So we thought, we can bring half the students in the building at any given time and we can do the six-foot. You've seen the markers. You've seen all the work that Andy and his crew have done and respect the distancing that we need with half our students. It won't be an issue. So just to make it simple, and these aren't real numbers. If I had 24 kids in kindergarten, I now have 12 on any given day. Just, that's just rough math to give you a sense. So if I'm Lindsay Crawford teaching kindergarten, I have my 12. But I also have this other 12 that I'm responsible for and I'll walk you through that. So there's two groups, blue and white. They'll be assigned to a group. We have had parents message us. We have said we will align families. So if you have siblings in our school, you're either blue or you're white. We're not going to divide up families. This is your schedule. It's either going to be week one, blue meets Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, for instance, and white meets Thursday and Friday that week. The next week, blue meets Monday and Tuesday, and white meets Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. So Wednesday is your swing day. Every other Wednesday will be blue or white. That way, if we did this for the entire year, every student has had the same opportunity to be in the building as much as any other student.
And this Wednesday, still, they are released early?
It's a swing day, but we're still going to do ERD. We're going to need those ERDs at the beginning of the year for less, less so for academic enrichment for our teachers than for practicing this world we're living in because of the changes. Yes. Wednesday's schedule won't change when we start and release, but remember Wednesday's a swing day. So every kid will have Wednesday. So every kid has that hour every other week.
Was, was there ever a thought of having Wednesday, having all the kids at home?
We discussed that. I, I kind of threw a sample out to some of you as to what that looked like. And here's the bottom line. Um, we had a positive school budget vote where people came out on a very hot day to support our school overwhelmingly.
Yeah.
Coming off three months of not even having kids in school.
Yep.
That having kids in school. That having kids in school every day and teachers in school every day was a fundamental thing to do.
So it's more of a response to the public to wanting their kids as much as possible here?
If you think about that, to me, that makes good sense.
Yep.
And our school is not big enough to say that we need a cleaning day. We don't need Wednesday off to sanitize. Some could argue that. They have six buildings. I get it.
Yep.
We don't. And for parents, your kid's in school more than they are less, if that's important for you as a working mom or dad. I hope that satisfies that question of why was it Friday or Wednesday a day that was totally remote?
Yep.
Okay, I also need to know, so when a blue purse, blue teen meets on Monday, Tuesday, every other Wednesday, on Thursdays and Fridays for those kids, are they remotely in the classroom?
Okay, so this is where we get into instruction, which I'll talk to, you brought up the question, so we won't table it. This is where a lot of our work is gonna be done in the six days that we have coming up in August. Here's the philosophy that I've shared and my philosophy can certainly change and it probably should for the better because the classroom teachers are gonna figure out exactly how this works. But from a, kinda metaphorically or from, to paint you a picture, if I'm teaching third grade and I have, and they have more than twenty kids in that class, but let's just use twenty for easy math, I have ten in front of me and I have ten that aren't here today. The philosophy is, you're in my class, but perhaps just not in my room today. Your device is with you, so at morning meeting, I want everybody to come in at the pledge, which is ten after eight. See everybody at ten after eight. I have you ten and then I got these ten. We do morning meeting, we do the pledge, we do morning meeting, we do, we're gonna do this. Got it? Yep, okay, I need to see some of you guys here. And it's all on a very much an individual classroom instructional basis with that teacher for those kids that are not in school that day. Now, Johnny in third grade is doing morning meeting with Tabitha and then needs to come back to see Rachel for reading Title One or something. That's Johnny's schedule. His brother, who's in Tracy's class, may have a very totally different schedule when, but they're both at home, is my point. So the philosophy is, you're in my classroom, but you're just not, you're in my class, but you're not in my classroom right now. To think, and I had some conversations with some parents, how come a kid can't just sit at their computer all day when they're home and be part of the class? You need to understand that teaching and learning is not as simple as just sitting and getting. Not everything is direct, direct instruction. But when there is direct instruction, I'd rather say it once to all of you and then when we need to practice it, I'll see you on those days when you come back that we can actually physically practice it in science because some of it's pretty hands-on. But I don't wanna say everything twice, so I'll, by direct instruction, I'll have you zoom in. But to have a kid zoom, think they could zoom in and be part of the class all day, it doesn't really work that way because we're working with individuals, we're working with centers. So it's gonna be key as to when do those kids that are not present in school zoom in to school and what does their Google Classroom look like? What are they doing through Google Classroom? Because that's gonna be the core of a lot of our work. And for the younger kids, Seesaw, which is a lot like Google Classroom for younger kids.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, if, if math is being the first thing in the morning, just say in a classroom and you got, you're normally in Monday, Tuesday or other Wednesday. And so now it's Thursday, Friday and you're still doing math first thing in the morning, so you can zoom in. But then, you know, I assume somebody's going to art museum and gym. I don't know. And then, so then it, there's no screen time for the, you know, Thursday, Friday people because they're not going, you know.
Well, they might.
Then, and English, English is at twelve noon or something. So you sit again in front of your computer, listen to the teacher. Is that how it's gonna go?
Could, could very much.
Cause it's only twenty-minute increments.
Could very much be, and I'm gonna let anybody else jump in a minute, but here's the point. It could very much be it's a middle school, but what it's not gonna be is the remote learning we experienced before. Kids are gonna have a schedule. But what Tabitha's schedule is in third grade, what Tracy's schedule is in seventh grade, might look very different is what I'm saying. But kids are gonna have a schedule. This is what you're doing when you're not here and this is when you're supposed to be present when you're not here.
Okay, that's what I got.
It's gonna be a regular schedule. You're just not in the building. That's the plan.
On a day, right.
But what I'm trying to get at is, the schedules aren't, they're gonna be unique to the teacher in the classroom and the needs of those students, but everybody's gonna have a schedule. And that's what we need to hit home with the parents, is this is different. They're gonna look very different. So they're responsible. They're not just off doing whatever they want those days. They're responsible for being in their virtual classroom that two or three days are not in person. Does that clarify what you're asking?
Well, I just wanna know if it'll be, you know, three or four times a day, they have to zoom in.
Three or four. I mean, I, I can't say three or four.
I don't think it's right for them just meeting the once in the morning. Cause I, I thought.
Yeah.
I thought when they were learning remotely, the teacher was up there teaching. You'd go in at nine AM, whatever, and listen and then, you know, do the work. Okay, so you shut the machine and you're actually doing some work.
Right.
And then you go back at eleven.
Very much could be that.
And, and that wasn't happening. So I was like, what do you mean? You're meeting for like one hour in the morning, every morning? That didn't make sense to me.
No, no, this is, this is different. I thought you were looking, for you, for me to tell you, this is what a forty-five minute block looks like. I can't tell you until after we meet, this is six days worth of being you with the teachers. But to, to your point, Mary, is we don't want that one-hour meeting and see you later.
Yeah.
To your point, we are with you on that. That's not what we're doing.
Okay.
What exactly we're doing is, I give you samples and examples, but I don't, I can't tell you because we haven't met yet. But we want structure and we want time that kids are zooming in and are present in our school, but not in our school. And that's a schedule and that's a change for parents.
Yeah.
And that's what we're looking to do. Do you wanna comment?
And I understand we had to do something and, you know.
Yeah.
When March fifteenth came and we needed to do something.
It's like I said, it's easy, it's a lot easier to close school than it is to reopen. And I'll never, we get the conversation with Jennifer Rue and Judy on the phone. I said, I'm closing school with no cases of COVID-19 in the state of Maine really, or York County, I guess it was York County.
No, it was not in the state.
So what have we got? What, what is our threshold for opening? That was my biggest concern. Well, we now have the threshold and opening, reopening is much more, more work than just closing. Okay, so yeah, I, I hope we're getting to the point.
Yeah, and there will be. I think that's been the talk of the group that I met with was around instruction. And we talked about a schedule where kids would come in for mini lessons.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
And then have some work to do. And we want parents to know, this is very different from the spring.
Yes.
We want them to have a space at home for learning if possible. We want a schedule for them to follow.
Yeah.
We want them to meet deadlines of turning in work. But, you know, as John said, that looks a little different at each cohort level.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely.
So it was a little logistics need to work on.
More structure.
Now, I guess you must have taken a survey of the teachers and how do they, like, some of them on the news, the interview teachers and they're like, I'm not going in. You can't make me. And I'm like, what?
Yeah, we're not experiencing that level of turmoil, but what, there are a lot of, I would be remiss to not say there aren't a lot of questions. There are a lot of questions. We're gonna iron out the questions. There's a lot of HR questions. That's Kim and I. As an employee, what's the deal? We will explain that as an employee, but first, let's not talk about you. Let's talk about kids. Let's please talk about instruction first and then we'll get to you. And most people are respectful of that. Let's do, let's get school set up and then if you have something you need to talk to, we'll talk about that next. So right now, we're talking about school, not really about the HR side of it, although we have the HR side down. We know, we know what that looks like. In regards to teachers, as I get to the remote learning, the kids that aren't coming at all, that's probably where the biggest question is, is how's this gonna, how's this gonna work? And I'll explain to the best, to this date, how this is gonna work. But I don't have anybody saying, this hybrid schedule isn't going to work and I can't work within this and no. The question is, what kind of professional development do I need to make this work as good as I possibly can? Lori and I in the CPT are sitting here saying, it needs structure, it needs this, it needs that. But you and I, we all know it's gonna be the teachers that develop that structure and all of that. Our job is to ensure it happens. So I, I think we're in a good place for developing this. People just wanna know, I get it. I'm on board. I just need to know how. And that's the work that we have in front of us. How do we make that work? And not just refine skills, but to move on to learning progression.
This is, this is what makes it so much different from where we were in the spring. Because in the spring, we'd get out of school on Friday and Monday and Tuesday it was like, okay, now we're doing distant learning. We had no time to prepare, no PD for the, for the staff really as to how this was gonna work. And I, you know, I think this is, it's great that they have the six days of PD at the beginning of the year so that the teachers themselves can feel comfortable with what they're doing and, and know what their schedule's gonna look like and can, and you know, once you get teachers together, they're gonna have some good ideas too, some good feedback to put in as to how this can best work for the kids and how it can work in the classroom and remotely at the same time. And I, I think that's, that's gonna be the big difference with, with this hybrid, not only with the hybrid program, but with distant learning as a whole is the teachers being able to be prepared and have some PD and get some feedback from each other and some ideas as to how it can be more effective for the kids that are home with their, with their devices.
There's one caveat to scheduling that I'll throw up there and we're working on this. There are students requiring additional support for their IEP 504 RTI plans. They attend five days a week. We may have a small group of students and we're pretty sure we will that come five days a week because they need to come five days a week. But also, they're probably candidates for individualized instruction, have a lot of supports in place anyway to make sure that those people are here and serving those students five days a week. We're not talking about a huge amount of students, but we do know we have them. So our, our most fragile students will probably come in five days a week and we can manage that and still keep the six-foot, three-foot distance markers that we're responsible for following through on.
What's pre-K doing?
We're gonna get to that. I am, I am gonna hold that one because I do have a bullet list.
Yeah.
I am gonna hold that one because it's right at the end. So curriculum, we talked a little bit about this already, so we jumped ahead. But students will follow the PBL standards per usual. Students who are not in person will have scheduled opportunities to join their peers who are in class via Zoom. Notice I didn't say exactly when and how, but we know it's a tenant of, it's a tenant of hybrid learning. Students who are not in person will be responsible for schoolwork via Google Classroom, Seesaw and/or work provided by the teacher or teachers. You mentioned specials. Kami and her team's working on that. We're gonna figure out how specials blends in. Specials meet once a week with different kids, five days a week. Now we're doing a two-three model, challenging for them. So although we wanna keep our day, we wanna start our day and end our day with whatever it happens to be per cohort with literacy and then math and then science, we still want our cohorts working in those content areas. We're also gonna have to figure out new ways of getting specials in. And that's emerging and I'm sure we will. It'll be easy for, for Jen who always teaches sixth grade library on Tuesdays because she'll have Tuesdays, but what about the kids she's not seeing? How's that gonna look for Jen? And they're, they're up for it, but they're clearly saying, figure out the classroom expectations, the classroom first and we'll augment and join in with them.
Didn't we have Phys Ed twice a week here in Akron?
We did for the eighth grad, last year's eighth graders.
Oh, I thought old students.
Not twice a week for all students, no. No. So the specials is a kind of a to be determined, but I'm not concerned that they won't nail it. They'll do an excellent job with whatever it is and how they answer. Maybe some of it'll be multidisciplinary. That would be kinda neat. Transportation, students will be transported via school bus or parent guardians. Our survey asked, would you be able to drive your student? Transportation, another one of those things that's emerging. I just got information last night that there's gonna be new regs on it this morning at seven AM. It was released that the new framework is coming to bear with some changes. So that, that was released. I saw an embargoed version of that yesterday and read the whole thing. I also know that some transportation things will be changing, but I'm not exactly sure what. So unless if things have changed, you have a bus driver with a shield, the seat behind the bus driver vacant. I do believe we can do every seat after that on both sides and family members can sit together. So am I remiss in saying maybe twenty kids per bus? About?
We, we, we scheduled fifteen kids for each bus.
For each bus, okay.
That way we have room in case a parent changed their mind and wanted to come back instead of doing homeschooling. We made, uh, we, when we did the routes, we made sure that we had plenty of room. We have a couple buses that are light and we're trying to work our sped and some of those.
Kids have to wear a mask on a bus. That's, that's not a.
That's not a given.
Gotta, gotta wear, when you're supposed to sanitize before you go on. The bus companies are figuring out how that's gonna happen on the stairwell. That's on them. They're the company. So it looks like our busing, we're pretty solid with who we know we need to transport and who said they could drive their kid. Clearly, we're gonna have more drop-offs. And that's the safest way to get to school during COVID times. So if parents choose, I'd rather drive my kid than take the bus, that lightened our bus load so that we're not looking at a second run right now. Again, things could change. Hopefully, we have a bus run. We start school, we have a, end school and we have a bus run. That's pretty cool that we're actually that far in this process. Buses was just all over the charts. If things change, I do think things are gonna change where we put more kids on buses. I don't see it going the other way, which is only benefit, which will only benefit us. Okay. Nutrition. Holly's joining us for our ad team meeting immediately after the school committee meeting. We're all meeting to continue our work. Students will eat breakfast and lunch in their classrooms and kindergarten and possibly first grade, we're working on this, may eat in a caf with six-foot distance between students. With the, the reason is, the reason why we're thinking about, pre-K always eats in their room anyway. So can, have a kindergarten kid carry a tray down to the kindergarten room. Looks like it's gonna be a wipeout, right? You predict that. So why can't we let kindergarten use the caf and spread them out, especially if only half of them are gonna be here to dine? And probably first grade too. So we have a, a plan. We're gonna refine it. The plan is to leave the classroom, go through the gym, go up the stairs, reverse line, punch in your number, then get your food and then out and go to your classrooms.
Are they bagged lunches or?
No, we're gonna do, Holly and I have met, we've decided that we can do the full regular nutritious and nutrition plan that we do because we can walk them through and then go to their classroom. Our numbers are such that we can manage that. And she really recommended if you can not do bag lunches and give them the nutrition that we, our FDA approved for, give them the nutrition we're FDA approved for. The only difference is probably Tina or Greg will probably punch in their numbers. So it's one set of hands on the finger pad instead of the kids. And we're gonna get used to it. It's just like sanitizing your hand when you walk in the door. The first day of summer school, I was standing there and nobody knew they were there. Just kinda did this like on an airline, hit one or the other before you come in. And then they did, day two, the couple forgot. By day three, they were all doing it. By the end of the week, lunch will be fine. It's just gonna be a little cumbersome at first and it'll take a little bit of time to learn how to do lunch. But Holly's been awesome and she's gonna be with us today. So I think, I think if we get our youngest ones in there, well, how can I have less calls for Mr. Wood to clean up spills of applesauce on the floor? At least that's the plan. We'll see. Remote learning, so remember, we, we have hybrid. We have the hybrid, which is you're coming to school two or three days. We also have some parents via the survey who told us, I'm uncomfortable having their students here at all to return to school. And they're not gonna pull them in homeschool. So what am I gonna do with those kids? In these cases, a remote learning option will be offered. Now, this is our newest piece of the plan that is as new as a conversation last night with staff. Remote learning was gonna be for students who aren't coming here at all. We will provide them with an AES computer.
But let me just tell you, some are, don't wanna bring their kids because they don't want their kids wearing a mask all day.
Regardless of the reasons why, Mary, and it could be, the reasons could be all over.
But it's not just because they're frightened of the germs.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't even insinuating the reasons why they're not.
But just to let everyone else know.
Oh, okay. All I asked in the survey is, are you planning on returning your child to school? Not why, that's you. You, you have, whatever you want, but are you? And the answer was, you know, at that time, which was about three weeks ago, seventeen and a half percent said, no, I'm not returning my child. Maybe because they're gonna wear a mask, maybe because they don't wanna be around other kids. I don't know why. But for those families, where students will be provided with an AES computer. I wasn't specific. That's gonna be on mic as to which one they get. Students will follow the PBL standards, just like the students that are here. The remote learning curriculum will follow the hybrid curriculum, quote, as much as possible. I need to be clear that there might be things that if you're not in school, you can't do. I don't know until we get there. Can Dave Cody really make a science experiment in his classroom come to life in your barn or in your yard? Maybe. He did a great job this spring with that. He really did a fantastic job. But Dave's already teaching this in a lab. How much can Dave really teach this for the kids that aren't coming in? So I put the as much as possible, but the idea is yes, the learning progression follows. It's not just sitting still. Classroom teachers will be supported by EdTech threes. Here's where we haven't mentioned EdTechs yet. So the support that kids need either, either in the hybrid model on their days off or when they're not coming to school at all, I got EdTechs and the EdTech three can teach. EdTech threes can deliver instruction. So I have the bodies and the people and the talent to service these students. Perhaps being, in this case, in some cases, the EdTech three may be the student's regular point of contact via Zoom, email, Google Classroom, Seesaw. It might not be so much the teacher. The teacher's involved because the teacher needs to do the scope and sequence of curriculum and the assessment. But maybe it's the EdTech for the two or three kids in this particular class that aren't coming. There's only two or three of them. Maybe there's one of them. So an EdTech works with this kid through the teacher. A lot of teachers are saying, yes, but I still wanna have a relationship with my kid. Have at it. Have the relationship you want. What I'm saying is, I'm trying to take some of this off your plate, teacher, and let the EdTech help you because I don't want the teacher doing three things, blue, white and remote. But our teachers are passionate and caring and they want that connection with the kid. If it's one or two, you can probably pull it off. If it's ten, I don't know. I might, I would recommend using your EdTech a little more. I really would. Now, look, I, I don't wanna see burnout by December under this new, under this new plan, right? So we'll see. This is emerging and I think you're gonna see that the remote learning at K-two might look different than in middle school. You know, it might just look different due to the teacher, due to the EdTech, due to what they need to learn. Students participating in remote learning will commit to this process for a trimester and will have the opportunity to join a hybrid, blue, white, in-person option, providing AES can continue to operate within the guidelines. Now, what we are saying to remote learning parents is, it's not à la carte. It's not, you're coming on Wednesdays and Fridays. It's, no, you, you wanted them out, we'll service you, you can. It's no, you wanted them out, we'll service you, you can have them out, I get it. But you gotta stay out for the trimester. It's gonna be a long-term commitment at least. And then we can reassess as we get closer to Thanksgiving or the week before Thanksgiving. Where are we with COVID? What are our numbers? Can I bring them back or not? See what I mean? So we came up with this answer for remote learning just within the last week, and we haven't even told parents this yet. They'll learn about this after today. The question was, gee, Mr. Ross, do you think our remote learning kids will now spike now that they know it's an option? I don't know. There are some people that automatically go, oh, yes. And I question, why do you say, oh, yes? Why, what is your default to say, oh, of course it will? It's kinda funny. It's like, I don't go right to, of course it will because we're offering it? I don't know. Maybe, maybe it's a better, maybe it's a better answer than to a blue-white because I have my kids home all the time. For some people, that might be better, and that might increase our remote learning. But I have no data and no inclination to suggest to you that our remote learning numbers will go up. They probably will. I will guess they probably won't go down. I have a list of about, well, be careful, probably about a dozen kids that the parents have already said, these kids aren't coming to school. I know who they are. Will those dozen all of a sudden decide to send their kids back? Probably not. But will other families say, hey, I like that remote learning. That slide looks pretty good. I'll take the computer, keep my kid, and you can zoom in and turn, have an ed tech do it or not. Maybe our numbers go up. But to suggest that it's gonna go up significantly, I don't have any data to suggest that's true. If it did, then our teachers need to change their practice. If a lot of kids jump on remote learning, we're gonna have to have a conversation about what does the hybrid look like? Because a lot of you kids aren't even coming in for the hybrid now. So it's gonna be interesting just to see how it plays out. I don't know.
When you do all this and you notify the parents, there must be gonna be a timeline of, you make up your mind what you wanna do. By what?
We're talking about that right after this meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because I already got kids scheduled for blue-white. Everybody's on a blue-white schedule right now.
Yeah, but I mean, they can't just be bouncing in and out, as you said.
Oh, no, 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 exactly.
One way or another, and it has to be a date.
Well, what we're gonna do is have to get--
I know you're gonna do that.
We're gonna have to get parents, if you want your kid to be remote learning, you're gonna have to let us know by X.
Yep.
And then by Y date, we can let everybody know what their schedules look like.
But there's remote learning and then homeschooling.
Homeschool is completely different. If you homeschool your child, you're just unenrolling them in Acton Public School. They're no longer our student. You are completely in 100% responsible for their education. Some, I know of a few families that have moved to homeschooling because of this. I can't say that's because they didn't know about remote learning. They just chose to do that, and that's what they chose to do. And my guess is those kinds of families will come back when things clear up a bit.
No, but you might need to add that distinction. There's this, 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 and homeschooling.
But homeschooling is not ours to even add though. Because it's not ours. That would be like saying this, this, and this in the Christian Academy. Well, the Christian Academy isn't ours. It's not, it's something else. Homeschooling is just like going to a Christian academy or Catholic school. It's, it's separate of a public academy.
And those people understand what that means anyway.
They have to disenroll, yeah, and they know they're their teacher. And then we don't, we didn't have a ton move to the homeschool world because of this. We had a few.
Now, with the homeschool students, they were allowed to come in for certain things, right?
In the past, Jeanette, we've had, we've had a pretty robust homeschool family and a few others that live in Acton that would access perhaps music because they can't teach it, mom don't have the instrumentation or the expertise. Would go and sit with Travis, and that student would come in, mom would drop the student off, and would go to that music class, meet that cohort of age kids, and then go home.
Right.
I'm unsure exactly how that's gonna work for, say, that one homeschool family this year. I need to think about that and talk with them. Because right now, I've got kind of a herd, kids coming in all at the same time, and then I got this random, and I, and I don't wanna, I don't-- here's the other thing, is by law, we don't have to open our schools to homeschoolers. That's just been the practice. It's the right thing to do, I support it 100%. What I'm gonna have to do is give this pause this year because I'm not sure at this date and this time what that's gonna look like. Yeah.
My guess is from things that I've been seeing and hearing from parents and reading on Facebook and stuff is that rather than have an increase in remote learning, that at the end of that first trimester, when parents see how well things are going, if things are going well with the hybrid situation, if they're gonna want to get their kids back into the building.
They may. Hopefully, we can support the numbers. Hopefully, the CDC guidelines allow us to bring the kids who want to come back, back. Another one of those wait-and-see things.
But should you say that upfront?
Yes, the, this student's participating in remote learning, and then at the bottom it says, providing we can bring them back within the guidelines. That last bullet speaks to, you gotta commit to it. But then even if you commit to it at the end, I gotta make sure I can bring you-- I don't wanna make promises I can't fulfill.
Well, that's what I mean. They have to understand.
They have to understand that, correct.
That doesn't really--
Does that mean like if the CDC says you can have 15 kids in a classroom, if the remote learners wanna come back and it drives your numbers up, we would have to look at another teacher? Or does it still--
It's more about space than teachers. It's not, it's space. It's not the teacher numbers. My, my class size is as low as 11 feet now. Because of, because of the hybrid, they're exactly half of what they were when we rostered the kids, so to speak, when we, when we put them in their classes. It's more space, it's more space. It would be like filling the backfield with portables, kinds of things. And then, and then how do you teach in a portable and then run over and teach in your classroom? And it's, it's, logistically, it's, there's a lot to this.
Right.
Using those ed techs as teachers because they have the instructional certificates is the key, is the key to spreading out the teaching. That, that works for me, but the spacing doesn't. It's gonna come down to allowing--
I'm sure you'll give them all the correct information, but there's always gonna be somebody that has some other thought.
Of course.
But you make the rules.
Of course. Well, we are today, you are voting on this today.
The rules are the rules.
Right. Correct. We are offering education to the students of the town of Acton in really two ways, hybrid learning and remote learning. Pre-K, questionable pre-K came up. This was a separate agenda, our item, I tucked it into this because we made a decision. Pre-K will meet with half the kids at a time too, but we decided on a different model because we had some parent input that really helped develop this model through the teachers and Amanda Cormier. Students will be split into AM and PM groups. AM students will be offered breakfast, PM students will be offered lunch. Students will be transported via school bus or by parent guardians. We have very few who need the school bus. But we'll do that extra run with them. We have two or three that need to get home. They come in on the regular bus, but now they leave at like 11:45 or whatever the time of dismissal is. We'll get them home. And then students will follow the pre-K standards per usual, and all age-appropriate CDC and MDO, CDC guidelines will be followed. Four-year-olds do not need to wear face coverings. Five-year-olds do. So as a child turns five in pre-K, we're gonna have to bridge that gap. But to start with, if they're all four, then they, in their own little pre-K world, they won't, they won't need to, and there'll be half of them, and we'll do a split session morning and afternoon with an hour in between to clean both rooms and the playground.
Well, if the parent wants their four-year-old to wear a mask and they're comfortable with it, they can?
They can. We're not gonna prevent it.
Yeah.
But by law, by rule, by guidance from the CDC, we don't have to force kids four-years-old to try to do this. We did ask, which was interesting, of the pre-K parents in the survey, do you feel your child can social distance and wear a face covering? And I think something like 40% or less said yes. The others were very honest, like, are you kidding me? You know, that was kinda how I read that data. I was like, yeah, I assumed that to be true, but we needed to hear that from the parents. Yeah. So that's how pre-K is going to be arranged, and that's how we're gonna do pre-K.
So they're gonna be coming every day?
They're coming every day. It's just a split session, morning, afternoon. And to be honest with you, the pre-K piece isn't wrapped up, but it's way more wrapped up than the rest of this plan because we had to focus on that, get it done, and because there's so-- there's only so many pre-K parents, right? The span eight kindergarten through eight is so many more kids and parents. We were able to call them, talk to them, figure out which session. Amanda's been my right arm on all of this. She's been running it, we've been talking every day. We, pre-K is pretty sewn up. The details, don't have them, but we know how that's gonna run. We even know which kid needs to get on which class at which time.
Do we know how many pre-K kids there are right now?
Well, we had, coming into this, we had 24, but we also had some who just, we, remember, pre-K is not compulsory education.
Right.
They said, I'm gonna not do pre-K this year, I'm good. I'm good with COVID. Had nothing to do with our planning, had nothing. I know three did that immediately, like, nah, we're good, we'll wait till kindergarten.
So--
Times have changed.
Somewhere is around 20.
So it narrowed down. We had a waitlist going in June. That's why I mentioned enrollments up. The times are weird, but enrollments up. Yeah. I'd like to have Mike show you the video if I could. This is a video that's gonna go out. I'll get off this. And we've got permission, I believe, for everybody but one right now on this mic, so I'll leave that to you. This is Lori and Kim. Credit to Lori and Kim for getting right on this and getting all the footage. Big kudos to Mike for refining what he had and working with me on about a daily process to get it to this. And the idea is when we send the communication out about our decisions, you'll be able to, we'll be able to give a link to this, and then another link when school opens. I don't see that's gonna change. But it'll give, mom and dad aren't allowed in the building. See, mom and dad are dropping them off at the curb, put them on the bus. Mom and dad don't know what's happening inside. And we thought it really made sense to show them what is happening to their kids. So the face mask myth and the this and the that, we're trying to help demystify some of that. Also know that when you see the video and little things pepper in like, check for symptoms before you come to school. Well, that's, that's a nice statement. Mr. Ross, what are the symptoms? That glossy piece of paper will be mailed home. So you see the video, you also have your thing you put on your refrigerator, these are the things we're gonna check for. So if you see something, also know that in most cases, there's a piece of information going out with it next week. Okay? I'm gonna get off the, off this. And then after you see the video, perhaps you can make a motion to vote on the hybrid learning model. Hello, students, parents, and friends. I'm pleased that we will be seeing the children soon at Acton Elementary School. We spent the summer planning the reopening of AES and have put many things in place to ensure the children have a safe learning environment. We've had a successful summer program with approximately 25 students and 10 staff while following CDC's social distancing measures and wearing face masks when required. This video is intended to provide you with some of the details of how school will open when your students get off the bus or after you drop them off until they return safely home to you. I hope you have had a great summer, and we'll see you soon. I hope you have had a great summer, and we'll see you soon.
Aww.